Oh, okay.
Nice.
It's a flamingo.
I had this in my back because a man, every day we were driving by, I go, "I should have a chicken in here."
It's a flamingo.
I just gave you a...
It was the yak signal. Yak or...
Did you...
It has a...
Chicken in there?
No, it's a standing hat and a score.
Well, I got a chicken.
On my computer.
It's a little famous.
No, Amanda knew what it was, but every time we drive by, she goes, "Was Sarah got that chicken in here?"
But it's like people tip it.
I heard them.
I had to put it out in years. And Kate was like, "I'm putting it on the ground."
Sure.
He crawled up in the attic of the garage looking for...
I mean, I know, like, down the house.
Because there's nothing up here, like, then your dad must have got it.
He just found the chicken.
Or taken it with him when he left. And so he put it in.
Right, now I gotta sit down. It's time for the mayor to do his thing.
He said it was. I mean, he said it's 113. Yeah, I talked to him.
113. I think about 65. Yeah, you know, it's just a city that... Oh, rich.
Where can you go?
Literally the darling...
Did you know...
Oh, that's good. All good.
Okay, we'll call the meeting in order. We'll have a Twitter invitation made by Councilmember Crocker.
Pardons to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, thank you so much for the opportunity to make decisions for this wonderful city. We do ask your blessing on all the citizens and all the folks that are impacted by decisions we do make and ask for your wisdom and guidance as we do that. I would thank for our law enforcement and all the city staff that are here to help as well. We give you thanks and you just aim it.
Okay. Approval of the agenda.
Are we... We're doing an executive session?
Yeah, do we need to have a...
Something that...
I think it's on the... We have... So you can formally do so.
Make a motion. Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Notice some comments? No, uh, see anything? How's the library doing?
We're doing good.
Good, getting by?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
We've been busy. People think COVID is over, I think. They're like, out and about, all over the place.
Angie, what about you?
Just hanging in there. Hope things kind of start to relax on events and stuff so we can start planning some good things.
Okay, well, then we'll move into item F. Consider agenda.
We have approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 4, 2021. Accounts payable, January 6, 2021, for $212,556. Accounts payable dated January 14, 2021, for $61,285.22. Ann Borden Commission minutes of the Library Board and Planning Commission.
Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Honorable Mayor and City Councils, item H1, this is a designation of unfit property. On November 11, 2020, the coenforcement officer, being myself, did a preliminary investigation into the property located at 101 North Cedar Street. Excuse me, was found to be in violation of City Goddard Code under Chapter 4, Article 7, for unfit habitation. A certified letter was sent to the property owner allowing 30 days to lapse to begin the process of bringing the property up to the standards for livability. Property owner did some beginning work to the yard, but failed to bring any overall improvement to the property itself. It is now recommended that the governing body move forward, signing a resolution to set a date for a public hearing to consider condemnation. The City of Goddard Code enforcement officer, being myself, found following noncompliance of the City of Goddard Code, Chapter 4, Article 7, for listed property below. The following constitutes a blinding influence also under the Kansas statutes annotated 12-1750D, uncleanliness, dilapidation, disrepair, structural defects, walls, sightings of exterior quality of appearance not commensurate with the character of the properties of the neighborhood, unsightly stored or parked material, equipment supplies, machinery, trucks, or automobiles or parts thereof, or any violation of Health Fire Building or Zoning Regulations. I was and in company with Brooke Rannenberg, Public Works Director, as well as multiple law enforcement officers of the Goddard Police Department. So this was an objective and unbiased opinion in regards to unfit habitation. Some of the pictures here are also the ones that are included in the agenda. As you can see, it's in an overall state of disrepair, decline, and as far as I can tell, there has not been any, and building permits pulled since we issued that letter. They did do, like I said, some mitigating factors. They removed the fence, they brought down some of the trees, they removed some fence posts and did some cleanup in the yard, but overall, they left a lot of trash. There is multiple holes in the side, some foundation and structural issues, mold, water damage, weather damage, et cetera. Everything else that would constitute blinding influence as well as unfit habitation. There was a small cost associated publication if we move forward the resolution, and it's approved as the form. It is recommended that the City Council adopt the resolution for scheduling a date and time for hearing, findings of fact, and the property in question no sooner than March 15, 2021. So this would be the resolution that simply says that we would schedule a hearing for condemnation at this point if you deem that a condemnation case is necessary for a public hearing. I'll open it up to questions.
So you spoke with the property owner?
Yes, very much so. We had to send out a letter, and once he received the letter, he called me and we had a conversation. He proceeded, as I said, to remove the fence, some fence posts, some trash. There was a tenant and a tenant left, and right now, there's no one living in the property. He's trying to offset the property, he's trying to kind of offload it onto another property owner, trying to sell it to somebody. That person has also been informed that it's going through condemnation. As of yet, the property hasn't officially changed hands, there hasn't been a title transfer. He simply is trying to sell it, but informally speaking. So there's no actual title transfer as of yet.
Is there a plan to rehab it anyways with the sale?
It's yet to be determined, honestly. I spoke with the would-be, the future property owner, if he can actually move forward with it, and he seemed inclined to, but he also has failed to actually act on that behalf. So there has been no building permits pulled, nothing that would indicate that they want to do a siding, a roof repair, a structural repair, electrical, mechanical, or otherwise that would actually bring it up to a livability standard.
So who would that fall on? You sell through or fall on the new rent owner then to make sure that they...
No, until there's actually a title transfer, that's the... It's kind of in a set of limbo, because even though technically he's saying he's selling it, since the title hasn't transferred yet and hasn't been recorded, then he's still responsible. So it would be like if I gave you a certain amount of money, but I haven't actually given you the title, that doesn't mean anything. By state law, you're still the property owner, you're still registered as the property owner. So he's still responsible. So if the city decided to move forward with the resolution, we have to give him a certain amount of days, we would still notify him, and I would also notify the future property owner, even because he does have some claim to it, is sort of a stakeholder, and let him know as well that there is this condemnation case moving forward. But ultimately, it's still under his name, the original property owner's name.
Well, I mean, if it gets, ends up getting condemned, then the new property owner has to either tear it down or doesn't have any, he don't have any time to fix it after it's condemned, is it?
No, well, ultimately, it's up to the governing body. So once the resolution's signed, he, the letters would go out to the future stakeholder, the existing stakeholder, anybody else who has any claim to the property or any interest in the property. All of them would be notified, as well as getting published in the city newspaper. We would allow that time to lapse, and then there'd be the official hearing where everyone is welcome to come and speak their piece about the property, including the future property owner, the existing property owner, anybody else, at which point it'd be up to the governing body if they want to extend it, sign a resolution for condemnation, and give them 45 days to bring it up to code, 60 days, et cetera. Or if you wanted to sign a condemnation case and have them move forward two weeks and then just see if they do anything with it, and then extend it if they do. There's a lot of leeway and latitude that the governing bodies afforded during these condemnation cases, but there's also state law that requires us to publish it and allow at least 30 days plus two publication weeks to notify everybody that's an interested party.
So how bad is the condition on the inside of the house, aside from the blinding influence or light on the outside of it? You said mold?
Yeah, so there's water damage, mold, exposed electrical. Some of the pictures kind of give testimony to that. The inside was, at the time, occupied, so wasn't it, we weren't able to like move beds and see what was under that and everything else, but it was in an overall state of just general decline. And the current tenants were more than happy to allow us in and show us the general state of disrepair because they were renting it, and they had reached out to the landlord multiple times for water damage, leaks, exposed wiring, and the fact that the roof was leaking water all over the floor, and he refused to do any maintenance or repair. So they were more than happy to allow us in and show us just the general state of disrepair. Brooke can testify to that as well.
Yes. All I can say is yes, he is correct.
Any more questions?
What kind of date are we wanting to do?
Thank you. We can go ahead with it and make that motion to go ahead and assume as possible to get things underway. So...
March 15 would be the earliest.
March 15.
Okay.
Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
All aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
That'll be Resolution 2104. That is the resolution, correct?
2104.
I mean, we're passing the resolution, correct?
Yes, yes. Pass the resolution.
Item H2, final plat, McCullough addition.
So just a quick background, Savoy Company PA has submitted a final plat on behalf of the developer, Jesse McCullough. This plat is for one parcel to be used for the building of a single-family detached primary residence. This was a requirement given to Mr. McCullough due to Kansas statutes annotated 12-764 and Kansas statutes annotated 12-752 require investing in development rights after the recording of a plat. This statute plays in the City of Goddard subdivision regulations, Article 12.102, which has similar language in Article 9.101A-1-2, which requires all new buildings exist on platted land. Final plats must be approved by the City Council. Plat for one, this is just a general analysis, the plat is actually just for one single-family detached residence. The final plat and the preliminary plat were both approved by the planning permission. KSA 12-752 and 764 were reviewed by the city attorney, and it was approved by Robert Corkin of Morris Lang on April 23, 2020. Basically, this was an interpretation, and I came to the conclusion that based on our subdivision regulations, Mr. Jesse McCullough wanted to build a house, and he wanted to build it on unplatted land. According to Kansas law and our own subdivision regulations, since Mr. McCullough is within the city limits of Goddard, he would be required to plat that land before he could build a house on that land. The attorney reviewed this and concurred that this is correct, that Kansas statutes annotated, as I mentioned, would require the plating of land, and since he is within the city limits, would also fall under our subdivision regulations that any principal building would have to be on platted land as well. So that's why Marcus Savoy submitted this plat on behalf of Mr. McCullough to get that moving forward so that he can build single-family detached residence. This is the final plat. Kind of gets washed out in the lighting, but this is where the location is, right here. This is 199. This is our city limit. So he's just well on the north side of 199, within our city limit. This is actually outside the city limit. It's one of those small residents that you probably remember from our boundary resolution that we accepted earlier in this month. This is a private drive. These are all McCullough residents. So an uncle and I think another uncle. This is Jesse McCullough's current residence, and this is where he wants to post new residence.
I just don't understand the word that's said. This is that 23rd, there were the dotted line?
No, this is 199. Maple would be over here. Not north.
County corner to the maintenance shed.
Just, yeah, just north of our, going across the road.
Is that the place where they were having water problems from our drainage?
I don't think they were having water problems from our drainage. That would be Mr. Strelo, I believe, across the street. That's on the east side of 199. This is on the west side of 199. Strelo property, I believe, is right over here somewhere.
And he was claiming that he had...
Claiming it, yes.
Any more questions?
A motion, we approve the final plat from McCullough addition.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Item H3, well number seven, inspection and repairs.
Honorable Mayor and Council, this item is for, as it says, maintenance and repair of water well number seven. Well 7 has developed an undiagnosed issue that is placing drag on the pump motor. As soon as we fire it up, it loads that motor full wheel and shuts it down, automatically shuts down. As a result, that well is currently inoperable, and we have to take it out of service. This item is for diagnosis, repair, and repair required to remove, inspect, the pump, the column, and the discharge tube and the motor. As I said before, it requires removal and inspection of the well column and electric pump motor. The amount of maintenance and repairs are going to be determined during disassembly. We do not know until they get all the parts out of the hole what is causing the issue. We know there's a little sand buildup on the top of the column that's coming up out of the well. That may be indicative to something down the hole, but me not being a well specialist, I am not going to venture to guess. The repairs would, could include a complete rebuild of the well column and/or rebuild and replacement of the electric motor. I don't anticipate that there's anything wrong with the motor based on our preliminary text we've had to look at it, but that remains to be seen. Cost of repairs depends on the amount of wear damage they find. Our known costs are $8,536, and that covers the cost of pulling and inspecting the column pump motor and sending a camera down the well to survey it, the well itself. As I stated, there may be additional cost with the column and the electric motor. Total project costs are $38,654. I am asking for approval for $40,000. I don't anticipate it'll cost the $38,654. That's an estimate if they have to do all the work. I put a little buffer in there in case we have an unknown. This is similar to, if you remember this summer, well number four. We had a vibration in the column and had to have it pulled. Similar process, different problem. And we don't know what the problem is until they get it pulled. But $40,000 will go to $82,830, $82,400, and that is... Can you refresh me on which fund that is? That's map, please.
Water reserve fund.
Water reserve, yes. Thought I had put that in there, but I did not. Recommendation is, Council authorize the staff to approve the maintenance and repair of well number four in the amount not to exceed $40,000. Any questions? Well 7. I'm sorry, that's... I had well 4 for my old one, so I apologize for that. Thank you, Sarah, I apologize. Where's well 7?
Number 4. Where's it at?
Number 4 is on 119th. Well 7 is off 119th. You go down an alley, and it's hidden in a residential neighborhood on the west side of Wichita.
Down 119?
If we go down Kellogg, go south of 119, our well, I don't like to tell everybody exactly where our wells are for safety purposes, but that's why I'm not doing a public forum, but they're in that area. If you'd like to see them, I'd be glad to take anyone to them, but I don't want advertising addresses. We, I honestly don't know. It could be a casing. I, I have no idea until Clark gets out and pulls that.
And there was a claim of any casing problems?
He did not say, to be exact, to be honest. That was what they'd normally, the estimate they gave us to pull it and investigate everything within the well, he did not address the casing. But when Clark came out, he didn't anticipate it was a casing issue. Otherwise, I think he would add it into the estimate, because he didn't mention casing at all.
How much should we spend on the last?
About the same amount. I think after we were all said and done, it came up to about $27,000 and just under $28,000.
This is a submersible pump, isn't it? Submersible in this well?
Yeah, the pump's submersible in all of ours, but just our motors are, you know...
Number 8, well 8's the one that's completely...
Yeah, well's got the, 8's got, that's right, it's got the motor down there too.
Yeah.
Any more questions, Kate?
We're making a motion to authorize the staff to approve the maintenance and the repair of the water well number four in the amount of not to exceed $40,000.
That's, we need to correct that. That's, it's well 7.
Number 7.
When I updated them, that's my, my apology there.
Number 7.
Okay, motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Honorable Mayor and Council, and I have our bond attorney on Zoom, who is also in another meeting for tongue gonoxie right now, so if we have questions for him, he'll be available. This is the Rustic Creek Edition General Obligation Temporary Notice issuance. In the agenda report, I kind of outlined the special assessment process for all of our developments, and it's not just individual for Goddard, but for the state of Kansas, for the folks that utilize the assessment statutes. We presented this as one item, since they're all intertwined together, and they may be taken in one motion. We've presented them in the following fashion with item H4A is the paving resolution authorization, H4B for stormwater resolution authorization, H4C, water infrastructure authorization resolution, and item H4D, sanitary sewer infrastructure authorization resolution. The history of the development is such that the plat was approved by the City Council on February 3, 2020, with development incentives requested on March 2. The improvement petitions and development agreement were approved at the June 15 meeting, and the engineering services agreement with Garver was approved on August 3, 2020. This is, is north, so up here is north, with 199th to the south, or the bottom of the image here, and Main Street running here with Kellogg on the left-hand side. So Main comes in, and then this exits to 199, with the detention ponds buffering 199th and the adjacent properties and the subdivision. What we're discussing here this evening is predominantly the improvements within Phase 1, with the exception of the grading. The proposed resolution for paving is estimated at $661,000 with the standard 1% per month inflator that's used here in the Wichita metro. There is no assistance with the city, so it's 100% borne by the assessment district, which are lots 10 through 16 in Block 3, lots 1 through 7, Block 4, and lots 1 through 28, Block 5. And I'd like to thank Micah for the handy-dandy little maps that you'll have here for each phase. For the paving, you'll see that this connects into 199th on the right-hand side, with north being at the top of the, of the map, with North Main that runs in, so you would have the Oshilins here, the four acres that the city owns by donation and land grant right to the south of it, and then the Quick Shops off to the left-hand side of Main with Hopper and Autumn Blaze to the west of the property. The paving that's being considered for the petitions is outlined with gray, and you have the blocks color-coded with this kind of olive drab color being Block 5, the purple being Block 4, and the brown being Block 3. There's 42 lots total. The stormwater improvement petition is for an estimated cost of $865,000 with the city because of carrying the drainage flow back when, when these two additions were developed without any sort of detention. There's a, a blankage drainage easement that flows across here, so in order to assist with, because these detention ponds have to capture and, and meter out the surface flow to the west. Now, with that being said, that will also assist the stormwater flow that comes down here and then eventually flows into the Capskin and the Arkansas, so it will slow the downstream storm flow from this development that occurred in the 80s and subsequently into the early 2000s for Autumn Blaze. The water distribution is estimated to cost $213,000 with 0% being assisted by the city, and it will cover lots 10 through 16... and it will cover lots 10 through 16, Block 3, lots 1 through 7, Block 4, lots 1 through 28, Block 5. And again, just detailing the lots in question with denoting the public reserve donation as well. Sanitary sewer. It's for an estimated cost of $368,000 with 0% participation by the public at large, and this will be apportioned by lots 1 through 16, Block 3, lots 1 through 7, Block 4, lots 1 through 28, Block 5, and they'll be divvied up by the fractional cost of 2 by 129ths, and then 129ths for lots 10 through 36, Block 2. And again, just showing the sanitary sewer portion, which is right here, and then this is the one with the lighter apportionment. Financial considerations. I'm just kind of reiterating the petition process because, as you are aware, we issue these temporary notes, and anywhere from two to four years later, we go through, as we just recently did, and I note that in the staff report for St. Andrews, the final phase, and the property owners that have moved in often forget, and I know they bombard occasionally me, mostly Terry, and I thank Mike as well for taking some of those calls with folks wanting to know, hey, what's going on with this? Why are you raising my taxes? So I'm reiterating the statutory process here that is levied under KSA 12-6A-01, and essentially, these are general obligation bonds, meaning the full faith and credit of the city's taxing authority to levy these will be issued to make sure that the payments are made. And again, that's not specific to Rustic Creek. That's what we've done for every other residential development within Goddard and what most of Sedgwick County in the Wichita metro has done. But the process is such that we received the petition from the developer requesting that, hey, we want to do these improvements. And then the council determines the petition to be sufficient. This is at the staff level, right here, and then it's advanced to the council, and the city council determines that it's sufficient and in the city's best interest. That's some of the statutory language. And for Rustic Creek, this was approved on June 15th, 2020, at that regular city council meeting. Then we have the resolution that authorizes the improvements on those petitions, and that's what we're presenting here this evening under consideration for the council to proceed to finance it. The engineering services agreement can flow kind of anywhere in here after the petition's been ruled sufficient, and we approve that on August 3rd, 2020. And then after consideration of these resolutions here this evening, we will return. We're planning on the February 1st meeting to authorize the temporary note placement and sale. And that essentially settles the temporary notes for a period of time statutorily anywhere from one to four years. And then at that time, we'll go for construction, and we're also anticipating a February 1st bid award for those improvements as well. As the temporary notes near expiration, the city will undertake the assessment process, and that will, as I state, that's what we recently did with St. Andrews on July 20th of 2020, and that included determining the final cost, approving the assessment role, calling for a public hearing for the property owner, petition financing improvements. In other words, the owner of their property said they wanted to make these improvements. They petitioned for that, saying, yes, you can tax me to make these improvements. That's what we do, but because there's transactions that occur for that land, that's why we have this notification process in place. Not only that, as we are aware, there's realtor discussion disclosures that have to occur, and also it goes on the deed. So whenever these transactions are occurring, that deed review shows that these assessments are pending. And then at that point, after the public hearing, we proceed with the issuance of the bond authorization resolution, and then subsequently followed by, at a meeting or two down the road, the approval of the sale ordinance. And this generally means that the bonds are closed within two to four weeks. The resolutions that are presented here this evening were authored by bond counsel Kevin Callen and reviewed by city attorney Ryan Peck. I have Kevin on Zoom, so if you've got any questions that I can't answer, or you have them specifically for Kevin, he's here to help.
I keep forgetting, who pays the temporary notes until I get them on the roll?
We capitalize that interest, and the notes pay for themselves, and then at that time, that's rolled into the permanent financing.
How many houses are they supposed to have in the Phase One project in the very beginning?
Right there. We've got a total of 104, I want to say.
106.
106, I'm sorry, with this first phase being 56 lots. Yeah, thank you.
There should be 42 lots in Phase One.
42, wow.
So...
I think we're through three minutes, sorry.
That's okay.
It looks like they got rid of the street that was going to go clear through.
No.
No, it's still there. It's still there from 199 all the way through to... Yeah, see, it connects right here.
Oh, okay.
And this is Phase One, and it says right here, 42 lots.
Okay.
With 38 in Phase Two and 27 in Phase Three.
Okay. Okay. I was just seeing golden stacks. I wasn't seeing the third street.
Yeah, and it's dark in there, so it's kind of difficult to see.
Oh, that's where it connects to the other... Okay, now I got it. That was just the... The colored one is the one they're working on. The other one's existing.
Correct, except for the sewer, which goes straight down all the way. So if there are no further questions, the motion would be to approve the resolution as presented with Rustic Creek Edition to construct paving improvements for Resolution 21-4, 5, 6, and 7.
5, 6, 7.
5, 6, 7, and 8.
I have motion to approve the resolutions as presented.
Second.
Motion by Michael. Second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Item H5, Star Bond, Phase Two, Authorization Resolution.
And in much of what we discussed previously, where we have phases for the petition process for the star bonds, we have the project plan, where we have the resolution authorizations for the issuance of debt, whether that's temporary notes or the general obligation special assessments. We have the same resolution process for the issuance for these special obligation bonds. And then we will subsequently follow that up with an ordinance for the sale of said bonds. And this is just kind of an overview. I broke them down into two different slides. We kind of have the pre-Genesis action steps that began back in January of 2013. Technically, it began back in November of 2012 when we went with the district creation, but we went through that process starting in November, which meant that we as staff were working essentially that summer to develop that. So going back to the summer of 2012 is when all of this started, with things kind of falling apart with S and O in December of 17, at which point, October of 2018, we formalized the agreement with Goddard Sports LLC, Genesis and Mr. Steven. We approved the development agreement. We authorized the issuance of $55,500,000 in project industrial revenue bonds. That occurred on October 22nd of 2018. The project plan amendment, which is what was amended last month, was called for on December 7th, and the public hearing was held on December 21st. The plan amendment for five additional competition baseball softball fields, including synthetic turf surfaces, stadium lighting, team dugouts, bullpens, spectator seating concessions, and restroom facilities, as well as the sand sports complex. That includes three fields, a common covered spectator pavilion, mixed seating, locker room, and changing rooms concession and restroom facilities, as well as other public and private infrastructure improvements to serve that facility would be financed with this issuance. The approved development agreement incorporating these, as well as the timeline, was also approved at the December 21st meeting, and the IRB authorization amount was increased by $10 million to a total of 50... I'm sorry, to a total of $65 million with Resolution 2016. This resolution approves the issuance of $10 million in star bonds plus the discount and fees to finance the construction of the improvements that were authorized with the adoption of ordinance 863, which is agenda item H.5B in your staff report. It affirms crews and associates as the underwriter, as well as... They're also the ones that we... That staff and our legal counsel worked with for the 2019 refunding, which we were able to save 8.2 million in interest on that, and we had an estimated payoff date of 2026. What you have here is prudently conservative revenue estimates, and we assume flat collections and zero growth within the district, just to be maximally prudent with the dollars. We estimate that the 2019 issuance that we refinanced with that savings to be extended to 2028, and the proposed 2021 issuance receiving the principal payments beginning in December 2028 and being retired by June of 2032. So the actual term of the original issuances has not been extended at all. The district generated approximately $490,800 with the city's 1% sales tax. So that means for every $1 in sales, a penny goes to the city, or for every $100 in sales within the district, $1 goes to the city. So there's approximately 3.2 million in total sales tax collections last year. That includes the city's 1%, the county's 1%, and the state's 6.5% for a total sales tax rate of 8.5 that's going into that collection. Now, as we know, and you'll see in the administrator's report, we have Brahms currently under construction, and that should be ready to go mid-2021. The hotel pad site you'll see is currently under development with the foundation and footings being poured, as well as an adjacent restaurant. That'll significantly improve these revenue estimates and revenue collections to accelerate the conservative estimate for that 2032 retirement. We're doing essentially the same thing that we did when we were able to capture that 8.3 million in savings. Then by the time you also structure in the other things, it ended up being just upwards of nine. We're asking for essentially the same structure to proceed because of the volatile day-to-day interest rate environment. We want to be able to create maximum savings for the city and the state with our dollars at play. So the resolution authorizes the city administrator, city attorney, bond counsel, and clerk to take the actions necessary to complete the sale, but that's only after the mayor and/or council president, in his absence, execute the necessary documents to secure maximum benefit of timing of the sale. The resolution also authorizes us to proceed so long as we're with the actions to complete the sale of the 2021 Series Bonds in accordance with the state of Kansas statutes, the municipal securities rulemaking board, and all other SEC requirements. Again, this is identical in form to the Series 2019 refunding that we authorized with Resolution 19-24. That's included in your staff report as exhibit E, H.5 point E. The issuance requires authorization by the secretary of commerce for proceeding. We do not anticipate any issues there, but just saying that every step of the way, the secretary of commerce is signing off on all of these after staff review, as well as the issuance transcripts reviewed by the state attorney general. Issuance, again, must comply with all state and federal regulatory provisions, including the SEC, the IRS, and the MSRB. The bond resolution and related documents have been drafted by our bond attorney, Kevin Counsel... I'm sorry, Kevin Callen, who's here on Zoom with us, as well as city attorney Ryan Peck, approving those documents to form. It's staff's recommendation to consider the proposed resolution authorizing the offering for sale of the city of Goddard, Kansas, the sales tax special obligation revenue bonds for the Goddard Olympic Park Star Bond Project Series 2021. Are there any questions for myself or for our legal counsel?
I don't know if you can get anything in there.
Sorry, Kevin.
Are there any questions?
Man in a box.
Man in a box. I feel like Sheldon with Waz.
Are there any motions?
Okay, good. He said he can see you on Facebook as well. Okay.
Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
It'll be Resolution 2109.
I'm going to get a drink of water before I proceed with my report. The Star Bond District, you can see Thatcher's drone shots here taken this morning, which show the water park portion with the childcare center and the health club, and then the competitive swim is to the west side there in the upper right-hand corner of that image. This is looking south, where you can see the ball fields and where the future sand sports complex and the additional five ball fields will go. You can see the pad site where they're working on compaction there for the hotel. A little better view of the hotel compaction, as well as the utility lines going into the And I'll send out... We received better photos later this afternoon where you can see the progress that's been made with the footings being poured here, so I'll be forwarding that along. And then in the next staff report, you'll see that progress as well. We'll include those. Arbor Creek, you can see four new construction sites for new homes here. There's the lift station that serves not only this subdivision, but can also carry capacity to the half section to the south, you know, as growth evolves for that area. And just kind of looking back for the next future phases of that development, looking southeast from the center of the addition. We'd like to highlight that there's 55 homes in Phase One. The total levied's $2.8 million, just... The total levied's 2.8 million, just under 2.9, with estimated specials at $225 per month. Average home value's 300,000. Municipal generations approximately 1,150. Out of the 245 total lots, 31 lots have already been sold out of the first phase. Cloverleaf, you can see wonderful progress, particularly on Martin's Court here, which is where we have the much-needed multifamily. And then the additional new home construction here to the east with Kellogg in the upper corner, and then the Seasons a little further to the east. And this is the shot looking south down Martin's Drive to Casado with Kellogg a little further back. And then the Star Bond District off the very, very top. Just showing additional new home development within Cloverleaf on some of our cul-de-sacs within that development. So there's 133 total lots with 86 lots available and 41 currently sold. So 65% is still available out of that addition. A new pad site under development in Elk Ridge for phase three. And three of the homes that are currently in construction on phase two, with phase three being across the street. Just kind of rounding out phase one and phase two in that addition. So there's 14 lots available in Elk Ridge. And a full build-out, that whole phase will generate a total of $27,600. Lustig Creek, which is what you have here for you. Nothing new to report at this point, but as we continue with that development, you'll be able to see progress occurring as well. And then, of course, here's the four acres that the city currently owns as well from our land grant. And just showing the pad site evolution within Goddard Galleria and the Brahms as they're doing compaction, which seems to be an issue that's taken prolonged work in that entire area, not just in the Galleria, but also within the Star Bond, just a lot of compaction issues and making sure that the geotech is appropriate for that development. The R-Cut project, what I'd like to point out is that KDOT approved the final design concept. And that includes, as we discussed previously, this asphalt cap is being eastbound with schedule, but it's been now coordinated with our project. So we're not laying down new asphalt this summer and then we go in and tear it out because they laid it in the spring kind of thing. So it's been coordinated. That caused a slight delay. However, the field checks are, or I'm sorry, the final office checks to KDOT are scheduled for February 1st. The approved design for this project is 186,210 with 142,058 being expensed to date. And then the state's covering the 1.81 million dollar construction cost for this. And again, it'll, it'll be an R-Cut that'll go through here. We'll have pedestrian crossing via islands here as well. So at some point, we'll need to discuss connecting sidewalks with our existing path system to that. Wanted to point out the sewer line cleaning that's currently underway and was recently completed. And it's our annual cleaning that we undertake. And Brooke, did you want to comment on how, how that progressed? If there were any issues or any items down the road?
No known issues at this point. They're gonna camera a sewer line near Oak Street because they may have a small issue with that. And then we're gonna look at an issue down in South Old Town that we have an historical low spot in the mind to see what the condition of that is. But they haven't come to any real issues yet that they've found.
Upcoming items in February, we'll have our annual report. We'll discuss the remainder of 2021. We'll have the rate finance, will, for our utilities and our debt finance. We'll have the work plan discussion. We'll have right-of-way co-op agreement that I think is, we're tentatively planning for maybe the 15th. I was thinking the first, but in looking at this, I don't think, I think we'll probably push that to the, to the 15th. Then we'll have the tentative, tentatively planning on Cloverleaf Phase Two. We'll have follow-up on the 15th with the Summerwood habitation discussion. Devastate senior livings tentatively scheduled, phase two discussion, February 15th. And then the Star Bond issuance sale authorization ordinance will plan for February 1st. If not February 1st, that fallback dates the 15th. And that'll be predicated by nothing that the city can do, but it'll be essentially, what's the market? What's the underwriter thing? Are we comfortable with it? And then get the mayor to sign the documents. And we'll, we'll finalize that and come back with the ordinance. Planning on February 1st with the fallback of the 15th. March, we've got the budget process about to start. We'll talk CIP and utilities. We'll have the community center update, annual roadway and street maintenance, chamber goals, and plans for future community events. We'll have linear park equipment discussion upgrades. And then at some point here, could be possibly February, it's reliant upon Tanganika's paperwork submittal. But we'll anticipate presenting the community improvement district distribution authorization to the council once that's approved as soon as, essentially, in much the same way that we get a invoice and canceled checks to reconcile that with the balance spent, balance remaining. For the Star Bond, we'll have to do the same thing for Tanganika CID for that construction project. Once we can attest to those expenditures, the council will take action. And then every, you know, month or quarter when Matt, I think it's every month when Matt gets a distribution from the county from that, then it's just automatically distributed because those costs have been essentially vetted and verified and approved by the council. That's all I've got for now. Do you have any questions for me at this point? All right, thank you.
Governor Biden comment? Larry, what do you have?
Well, we gave another lady time until February to do the repairs on her house. And I'd just like to have an update on that to see where she's at.
Yeah, I got a phone call earlier this week, Melanie. And she was hoping that you could make it by Friday, by Friday. Somebody accompanying you. I know that she has a dumpster in her driveway, I believe, right? And so you're gonna go by this week and take pictures and assess how far she's come.
Yeah, she needs to contact me. We, we sent her a letter and dropped them off at her door. I know she has a very busy schedule, but I gave her, she has two options. She can drop off a key and let us do an inspection with, accompanied by the police and other objective observers that can give sort of an overall review. Or she can, if she wants us to be there, when she's there, then she needs to coordinate with me so that we can go when she's available. She has yet to do that, so she's running out of time. But she needs to get back to me as soon as she can. She's just, her calling her hits a voicemail that's not set up. So it just hangs up. And it's, it's a difficult situation, but she just needs to be proactive in reaching out to the city because we're doing everything we can on our end to make contact and to establish a review process. So, and it kind of balls in her court right now.
How much progress do you think there needs to be before we say she's not?
Substantial enough.
Brian, did you say that dumpster was full?
Yeah, it was, there's been progress. You know, the extent to which I'm glad it's not a decision that I have to make, given what was there. I don't know how it relates to.
Did we ever reach out to any of the churches or anything for?
Yes, yes. And so Pathway, I reached out to Pathway. There's a gentleman from Pathway that can accompany us if she needs help when we go do the review. She'll allow us, and he'll be in a company with us. And if he wants to lend that assistance. Pathway doesn't typically do internal work. They usually do external work, cleaning up backyards, front yards, repairing fences, painting houses, et cetera. They don't typically do inside work, but they're willing to. If, if she can utilize that and leverage that, then they're more than willing to be of assistance. And they'll take all proper precautions, wear masks and gloves and everything else during this pandemic, so.
I'll give you her number because she called me earlier this week.
I have, I'm assuming it's the same number.
You got her number, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I just know that last time we called, every time we call, it just hits a voicemail that's not set up. But if you have a different number, then maybe I don't.
We'll, we'll check.
Okay, very good.
I'm just not sure what are they doing over here on this Santa Fe street where they're blowing dirt all day long down the road. Seeing a van and something else. It looked like they had a compressor blowing dirt up the street.
Right here, that across the street? You might be able to count that, I guess. Place where they cut the trees down right across the road here, Larry?
Yeah. I think Mike could answer that better, what he's doing over there.
I mean, other than cutting the trees down, he's gonna be planting new trees, but he needs to lay some dirt down. The grading on that lot is very old. I know he's, at some point, he's gonna need to regrade it. And that's what he was talking about, laying more dirt. I don't know about blowing dirt around that, but we'll check with that.
Yeah, we, we can check that. When he goes to regrade that, we'll probably have to clean that culvert out that runs south under Santa Fe to get that to drain. But.
The other Larry's allergies over there. I was driving twice today and once I couldn't hardly see across the street, there was so much dirt flying. I don't know what they were doing.
I didn't see that either. I don't know if they were.
All right, we, we'll call tomorrow and find out.
Sarah?
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything. Michael?
I don't have comments.
Brent?
Oh, I'm good. I don't have any comments at this time.
Yeah, okay. I was just gonna say, it's good to see you guys in person. Thanks for this little staff for doing everything. I know we've been throwing a lot of different things. Just got it all over for you, but you guys have been doing a good job, so. I believe we got an executive session. So 30 minutes, you think? Okay, 30 minutes, an exec session. I have a motion.
Motion to move to exec session.
30 minutes?
For 30 minutes, yeah.
Second, a motion by Brent, second by Larry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.